Real quick, Sheriff, you got D on here. Are you talking about the cancel item, D? Cancel?
I have D.
She's talking about F.
Yeah, I'm talking about administration, okay.
He said hurry, I did.
Okay. Well, we normally don't do questions during that, so I'm gonna go ahead and let you speak now. Give you your three minutes.
You want us to do this?
Yeah.
Okay.
I feel good about it, the flock. I'll, I'm gonna let you speak next after her, is that okay?
Excellent.
Sheriff?
Will you come up to the podium, please?
Uh huh.
I wanna make sure everybody hears your great voice and how great of a job we're doing.
Sheriff Waltman, 149 South Second Street. Great job. Thank you to the sheriff. You should be there every day, but thank you. I'm gonna go back to Second Street. We would like to know, I know it's supposed to be addressed, what is going on? But I'm gonna bring something up that I brought up last time. Have you guys recuperated the money that went from street funds elsewhere? And if so, if you recuperated it, is that ha- does that have to do with how the prices started at one part for sidewalk and got dropped? And with the delay of this project and the time span it's taking? Your last comment on the set price for what it would cost the neighbors? It was said to stay that, it would not go up. Maybe we'd get money back? We'd like to know where that stands. That's it.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask City Manager Vincent to send you an email with those responses. Looks like it's all about the money expense to you, so that sounds good.
Goes to our neighborhood and to, we all wanna know.
Okay.
Is that clarification?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page with what we're gonna respond back to.
Is that with the, um, the fees that were associated with that development?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think Vincent might have a small report, and hopefully we'll shed light on a few things a little bit later. Thanks, Sheriff. Scott, would you like to come up and speak about the flock?
My pleasure, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm gonna little stopwatch start, so I don't lose track.
So, Council President here is on, got you back.
Okay, great, thank you. If you could just let me know if I'm popping close to time. All right, well, good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. My name is Scott Lemmons, and I'm speaking tonight as a Crestwell resident who values fiscal discipline, limited yet effective government, and local accountability, principles I believe this community shares. On paper and on the frequently asked questions in tonight's meeting packet, Flock's safety license plate reader cameras sound like a convenient crime-fighting tool. But when you look past the sales pitch, they represent high cost, high risk, and low accountability. In short, this isn't good government, it's expensive government. Each flama- each flock camera costs around $3,000 a year, plus installation, maintenance, and cloud storage fees. That's money that leaves Oregon annually and has shown to produce no statistically proven reduction in overall crime. And then we sign, we're stuck paying forever just to maintain this access, and if we ever walk away, Flock keeps the access and the encryption keys. Meanwhile, the liability does stay with us. Flock contracts explicitly limits the company's responsibility for misuse or lawsuits. If their data is shared improperly, or if a resident's move-in is misinterpreted, misinterpreted, Crestwell, not Flock, bears the cost and the legal exposure. In other words, we're outsourcing the technology by keeping the liability. That's bad business and bad governance. Let's remember even larger cities are pulling back. Eugene recently paused its Flock rollout after residents raised serious concerns. Flock's system records every license plate it sees. It also has the ability, with a few tech upgrades, to utilize facial recognition and tracking. That means anyone going to work, school, medical clinic, church, would have their location locked without probable cause violation of the Fourth Amendment. The company's policies allow data sharing with other law enforcement agencies at any time. That would mean it goes through Oregon's Titan Fusion Center, which partners with federal agencies like ICE, DHS, and the FBI. Once that happens, our sanctuary laws offer no protection, and our residents' data is effectively out of local control forever. At the end of the day, this issue is about principle as much as policy. Flock cameras would expand surveillance, increase spending, and outsource accountability, while leaving Crestwell on the hook for another legal and financial fallout. We can protect both our wallets and our freedoms by saying no. Let's invest in people, not in permanent surveillance. Let's keep Crestwell's money and our community's safety where they belong, in local hands. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you guys for signing up and speaking, appreciate that. Sometimes you can be intimidating to walk up that podium, so, good job. With that, we're gonna move on, and we will have our presentation a little bit from our Sergeant here on the flock later. We won't be taking questions, but you're, we will be listening, and then if you have anything after the fact, you can email it to myself or any counselor, city manager. If you've got any further questions, we'll definitely try and move forward on that. Next up, we correspondants, we didn't have any, so we'll move on to the consent calendar. All items are considered routine unless pulled for correction, so has anybody had a chance to review those? Yes, all right. So, I'm entertaining a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Counselor Kent?
I believe that we accept the meeting minutes as presented.
Second? Counselor Dukes? All right. So, seconded, all who's in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Excellent. So, we're gonna move on to the administrative report, and move to City Manager Vincent Margarell. Sir, take it away.
Thank you. First item in your packet are the September bills. If you've had a chance to look at them and have any questions, we are here to answer those questions.
Counselor Dukes?
Um, there's a couple of them on here for the Lane County Public Works.
Can you, on what page?
Let's see, we're on page one, right, let's see.
Page 19 of the PDF, if you're looking at that.
Okay, so I do know that one of those payments were for striping. When the county does striping, we ask them to take care of striping for us, and that's one of those payments. I don't know if there's another one, Jim, that you can pick up?
Sure. Counselor Dukes, the other payment was a auction at Lane County for surplus vehicles. We managed to pick up three pickup trucks for that amount, so that's all clear, though.
Counselors, any follow-up? Any more questions? Nope? All right.
Okay, I'll invite Lane County Sheriff to come up and give his report, and included in that service report is also a discussion on the Flock cameras.
Which I just dropped. Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, in our calls for service, you'll see that there's, there's no category that really stands out. I do have a couple of events that I wanna talk about that happened down here that were pretty good. I guess, you know, good, good but bad. If I'm involved, there's always something bad, right? We had a bank robbery in Crestwell. He was caught, he was identified, and he was quickly found. We had him by mid-morning the next day. He had also robbed a man in Cottage Grove. That case is ongoing. He is sitting in the Lane County Jail awaiting his trial for these cases. In case people are wondering, we used EPD's Flock cameras to locate him and take him into custody. We had a Metro 11 case other than the bank robbery. That was a sex assault case that was eventually unfounded. The victim has pretty severe cognitive deterioration, age-related, and it was an unfounded case, but we did investigate that fully. If you take a look at the citations, you'll see that we're basically writing the same citations that we have been for the last couple of months. A lot of those are driving while suspended or license restrictions, and a lot of times it goes with that is the insurance violations. I'm happy to answer any questions about the calls for service, if anybody has any.
Counselor?
Let's go, take a second. Let's go, take a question. Well, since the mayor brought it up, we do see a goose egg there for our speeding violations. I know you've been busy, you guys have been busy writing citations, but no speeding violations.
Yep, we did not write any speed citations in the last month in September.
Wow. Well, we'll see, we'll see what happens next month.
Yeah.
I feel like the girl in school, dropping kids off in the morning, it's definitely been a little bit more slow, people slowed down while the kids are walking back and forth to school, and I do feel like there's been a current effort to slow down going down fast.
Yeah, it seems that way. I, so far this year, I haven't observed any crazy, crazy driving behavior in the school zones, which is awesome. We try to rotate through the school zones. Usually, we'll have, you know, myself and another deputy in the mornings will be, you know, maybe at elementary school one day, the middle school the next, and so on. The high school also gets plenty of attention with the teenage drivers, but we try to just be a visible deterrent in the mornings, so.
Counselor, anything else? All right. I appreciate you listening to our citizens' last meeting and hanging out down Second Street a little bit, trying to slow that down. I just wanna make sure you recognize that you heard and you went out and did something about it, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, so what I, what I have done in the last month down, down there in the, the parking area down there off Second Street, we've issued some verbal warnings to people as they're parking, on the proper way to park and to avoid collisions with other parked cars. We did issue one parking citation to somebody who was very blatantly disregarding any type of logical parking. And then I also issued some written warnings to people who were violating parking, but not really to the point where I think a citation needed to be issued. I'm hoping to just get the point across to people, so.
I think that's the goal from all this council, is really trying to get the point across, not trying to cite anybody for tickets in Crestwell, a small town, but a little follow-up and parking followed, nobody gets hurt, nobody gets ran over. Awesome. Anybody else got any comments? No? All right, sir, if you move on to the flock.
Yeah, so in, in the packet, there is some frequently asked questions. All the answers on these frequently asked questions came from the Flock frequently asked questions section of their, their website. There is a couple of things that I want to clarify, because it's taken out of context. So, for example, in the second answer, there's a section that says resident or non-resident vehicle. That's for like HOAs or gated communities that decide to purchase Flock. They can basically make a safe list. So, what would happen is, you know, let's say that the HOA buys a Flock camera, and then they, you know, talk to all their residents and say, "Give us a list of your vehicles." They input that into Flock, and then that vehicle is tagged as either a resident of this neighborhood, where it no longer shows up on the camera results, or it's shown as a stranger vehicle, essentially. So, that's the private version of Flock. They included that in their frequently asked questions, I want to clarify that section. I'm happy to answer any questions. I think that these frequently asked questions answer a lot of that. The Flock cameras don't cost Crestwell any money, that's paid for by the Lane County Sheriff's Office as a tool for law enforcement to use, so.
Counselor Kent?
Do we have any Flock cameras here in Crestwell?
There are none that are put up in Crestwell at this time. We're, we're holding off on that until we decide if that's a good fit. There are three that are dedicated to Crestwell, that the Sheriff's Office has paid for, but they are not, they have not been hung, or they're not monitoring none of that. So, it's a possibility to put them up in Crestwell. Ultimately, if the city doesn't want the Flock cameras, then the city's gonna miss out on the Flock cameras and the crime that it prevents.
Sure. Counselor Spoh?
I personally have some very serious concerns about these cameras.
Sure.
The, the way that things have been in our culture the last couple of years, we've seen a lot of discourse between, let's say, the two political parties, where they have utilized information to go after each other, they've spied on each other, things like that. You know, I know we're a small-town Oregon, but I don't wanna put us in a position that opens the door for tools to be used against us, and I feel like that's where we're headed with something like this. So, my question to you is, can you explain how the Eugene Flock cameras helped solve your bank robbery case?
Yeah, we were able to find the car almost immediately.
Right, but it was, it happened here, so what, we are saying that it identified the car when it came through Eugene, you already knew what the license plate was.
No, so, so.
I'm trying to, you know.
Yeah, I can, I can share some details about this case, but because it's a pending trial, I can't share everything.
Okay.
The vehicle that was involved in the robbery was a very distinct vehicle that we were able to catch on camera off of another business's camera. Once we were able to determine what vehicle it was, we were able to, because it was so distinct, we were able to use the Eugene Flock cameras to locate it. Once we were able to locate it, it narrowed the search, because honestly, we didn't have anything to go off of yet. It narrowed the search to a general area where we could, you know, start. We were able to determine that that vehicle kinda calls that area home base, and so it narrowed the search greatly. We were able to locate that vehicle, like I said, within a couple hours, so.
Counselor Kent?
Oh, just one more, one more question. I don't know, I have to think about it, sorry, I lost my train of thought. The Flock cameras, sorry.
Anybody else got anything?
Yeah, sorry, I need to think about it.
Counselor Casilla?
Yeah. Yes, so you just said that if the city decides whether they want them here or not, and you said the city, you mean the council? Is this a council decision?
Well, what I'm saying is that the Sheriff's Office isn't gonna put the cameras up somewhere where people don't want them. If the city decides that the city doesn't want them within the city limits, we're gonna respect that, and we're not gonna put them up within the city limits.
Okay.
Which is why they're not up now. This is, this is.
Okay, so they're not up now because the city has said no?
I'll, I'll speak to that. Counselor, or, sorry, City Manager Vince Margarell and Sergeant Spelger and I met, we discussed Flock. I got a tutorial, I got a better understanding of it. However, I too am not a Flock guy. I, I believe it's a good tool for the Sheriff's Office, and I believe that the intentions of it are good, but the road to hell is paved with good intentions, and so, nothing against you, Sergeant, or your deputies. I don't trust the government, especially the larger government. That's why I ran for mayor. So, we had a conversation, and we kinda came down to the point where we were gonna bring it to the council, we were gonna bring it to the people, but we were gonna kinda lead with an ordinance, and then we'd discuss further and maybe a memorandum of agreement. Where if they were to be put up, they'd be outside city limits, where they'd still be effective on 99 or the freeway. That's kinda where we left it, and then we decided to go ahead and make sure we brought it on camera, in front of the microphone, in front of all the council, and in front of all the citizens. So, that's where we're at today, for right now, that's where I stand, so you guys know exactly where I stand and what we did and what we discussed. That was plain and simple exactly what we did, and that's where we're at right now. So, hopefully that answers that question for the council. Anybody else got anything? Counselor Spoh?
Okay, sorry for that. Okay, so you had mentioned that there would be no extra cost to us. I do have a question about that. Will there not be an extra cost to Lane County? I mean.
The Sheriff's Office has paid.
Sure.
Yep.
And so, will that, so it will cost, it will, basically, it will be more expensive for you to operate now, because you'll have some new overhead. And are you saying that that additional overhead cost is not going to get pushed through us at our next contract negotiations?
The con- so, the contract that, that is paid for right now, it doesn't pay for things like RLED's access, which is the law enforcement database system. It doesn't pay for NCIC access.
Okay.
Which is, these are all databases that law enforcement across the nation has access to. That stuff that isn't.
It's already not part of it.
Yes, it's part, it's part of the package deal of contracting with the Sheriff's Office. You pay for four deputies and a sergeant, and you get all the things that come with that, and that's one of the things that comes with it. It's not something that's gonna be, you know, here's your $20 a month for us to have Flock or anything like that. The, the idea behind these cameras is for us to be able to respond to things more precisely. It narrows our search, it narrows our, the time that we need to investigate certain things. These aren't, these aren't cameras that we're going to be using for, you know, low-level, trying to see if a suspended driver is driving around, anything like that. These are cameras that we're using for major crimes, or we're using for, you know, silver alerts, which is like when an elderly person is missing. And their integral for that, to be able to determine where those people are headed, at least gives us a starting point. I hope that answers your question, I'm not.
Well, I, I would think that naturally, if operating expenses go up for Lane County sheriffs, they're going to have to pass those increased operating expenses off to the people that they're charging for their services, right?
Sure, and I, I get what you're saying, I understand what you're saying now.
Yeah.
And, I mean, the long and short of it is, whether the cameras are in Crestwell or not, they're still gonna be utilized by the Sheriff's Office.
Okay.
You know, they're a great tool, they're a great investigative tool, there are several cases I could, I could really talk about in just the last month, where they would've honestly solved our cases, or at least made it super easy to follow through and take people into custody and stuff like that. But if, if they're not wanted here, they'll be put somewhere else, and that's something that that community will benefit from.
Is there anywhere anybody can go to get a tutorial like you gave me? I know a little bit more in-depth and personal, but is there anywhere that a citizen can go to kinda have more information? You know, my, my big concern is, I think Vincent and I spoke about it the other day, is, you know, what if they double their money and they get bought out by a bunch of suits and all their information's like the Oregon DMV, and, you know, nothing against you guys, I know you don't, but the Oregon DMV sells our information every day.
Sure.
And, and that's a big concern for me, is, is the trust that, you know.
And I, I get that, and that's something, I guess, I could go way more into depth with a tutorial and explain the type of information that is available from different sources.
If I could check.
But, sorry, go ahead. I think I'm gonna say what I'm about to say.
I think this conversation might be appropriate for a work session, where a tutorial could be given, the public can see it as well, maybe some other representatives from Lane County Sheriff's Office can come in, and there could be a little bit more in-depth back and forth, and at that point, it may become a little bit clearer, and then we can also discuss in more detail the memorandum of agreement that we were talking about. But I think that much information is probably better served in a work session.
Okay. Sounds fair, so, well, does the council have any other questions that they can directly answer? All right. Well, thanks, sir.
So, you'll see, I just wanted to add one more thing. You'll see that I've added some photos of, of what it actually looks like, what the search looks like. The vehicle depicted in those photos is my patrol vehicle driving through the Eugene area, and you can see what those actually look like. I tried to give some close-ups, so you can see what the camera does or doesn't see. The cameras are generally configured to catch rear plates, sometimes they catch front plates, but you can see that even with that front plate, you can't see who is even in the driver's seat. And I'm a big guy, wearing a big uniform, so.
Counselor?
Well, actually, I'll save it for the work. Never mind.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Sergeant, for presenting. All right, we'll go on to the city attorney's report.
The report is included in your packet, it's pretty well described, the hours and the reasoning, unless you have questions towards it, I'll move on to the next item.
Counselors, any questions? All right.
All right. Code enforcement report, we have it down to six candidates for the position, um, report, this is the report, we have six candidates for the position, we're bringing them in October 21st and 22nd for interviews.
Counselors, any questions, counselors? Nope? All right. Move on to building permits again.
You also have the building permits, and this comparison to last September, you'll see, September 2024 was a little bit more permit generation and revenue. We've had, there's been about $144,000 in fees, and that value is roughly 3.7 million to date.
Questions on that, counselors? Nope? All right. Mullen, the new agenda item that we have added is F.
Yeah, I, I added this so we can cover a couple of things that are happening, that I can get out in front of the public. This is really not meant to be a discussion item. If there's discussions or questions either from the public or the counselors, feel free to, to email me, unless there's something that's really burning and has to get out tonight from you, you can go ahead and email me. So, first item, as you walked up to City Hall, you probably saw on the north side of the building, the Tregon area ripped up. We are installing a flagpole, and looking at how the flags are displayed and fly on the building. They typically get twisted, and we really don't display them the way that we should, so we're looking at setting it up on a flagpole, and that way we can also have them at half-mast if necessary. Included in that area will also be extended concrete and some additional bike racks for Building off of what the sergeant said with regard to increased parking enforcement, around City Hall and even out at the airport, there's been, brought to our attention, certain parking violations that we believe we can address with a simple circuit of 8:00 AM, maybe 12 o'clock, and in the afternoon, they drive around down, the parking code enforcement officer will drive it around downtown. I did talk to Lane County Sheriff's Department, and they're willing also to patrol when, when we're not. So, we're hoping to have pretty frequent, frequent coverage out in that area, especially as we get the project, first phase of the project completed, we wanna make sure all that parking and people are parking the right way. So, we will have increased parking continued. We did make a very conscious decision to start off with warnings, start off trying to do some community engagement, so we didn't go right to parking citations. Brought to your attention a couple months ago, the business summit idea that I had to bring in business leaders to talk about really sustaining local economy and how we maintain it, and any ideas or improvements that they can see. Evidently, some of the letters did not get to the addresses that we thought, so over the last week or so, I walked around to about 40 different businesses and met with business owners, handed them the letter, and encouraged them to come out. Since then, I do have two volunteers to help me organize the, the summit, so I'll provide more information as it comes up. Second Street project update, a couple of points. In one of our last work sessions or meetings, staff got discharged to really work with the neighbors and look at parking alternatives. The question was the bulb-out, how safe it was, the angle parking. We did have constructive meetings with, with the neighbor, and the decision is to go with all parallel parking on the east side of Second Street. It alleviates the safety concern of the bulb-out, it also avoids angle parking backing into other angle parking in that congested area, so looking at all the different options, this one seems to be the most prudent and will really help, I think, avoid certain safety concerns that might be out there. The, we also met with the project team, and in this, in our discussion last week, we really couldn't get any better odds than a 30 to 50% chance to complete the project Phase Two from Oregon Avenue to D Street. Given that, and the amount of, I don't know, interference in, in people's lives has already occurred, we decided to end the project by bringing up the construction and completing the project just north of the neighbors and the bakery area. So, we wanna get out of the intersection by about 100 or 200 feet. That will greatly improve the logistics of the project next year, if we don't have to really coordinate that entire intersection. So, the plan is that the project will be completed, sidewalk, curb, gutter, asphalt, and then we'll, we'll stop at about a couple hundred feet before, or north of D Street, and then we'll remobilize next spring. We just couldn't get a, a vote of confidence from anybody in the room that if we started it, we would be able to finish it before the construction season completely leaves us. Couple, maybe a month ago, Counselor Holt asked us about RFP for insurance and the last time that we went out for that, and it really had us generate some internal conversations about other RFPs that may be longstanding and that we haven't really issued in over 12 years or so. So, given that knowledge, we are looking at issuing RFPs. So given that knowledge, we are looking at issuing RFPs for our legal services and our judicial services. Those will go out hopefully by the first of the year. One of the things that we are looking at with the RFP for judicial services is to change from night court to day court. Evidently, we may be the only night court in Oregon left. So we're doing some benchmarking, collecting some information, but that may be one material change that, that you see in the judicial services moving forward.
Thank you, sir. All right. After that report, we'll move on to council action items. Move on to 6A, Curtis Thomas, our city planner.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
So we have two annexation requests tonight, so two opportunities to expand our city limits and add to our property tax base. And in addition, these properties will be new users on our infrastructure systems to, to help pay for the costs that we know we have. So at the work session, Counselor Holt asked the question, what does it mean to have urban services available for these properties? And after reviewing the development code, I'd say that that definition is kind of intentionally broad. From our perspective, it means, from the city's perspective, I mean, it means water, sewer, storm, and streets, but then it can also be expanded to school district, electricity, kind of, kind of items like that, that are within the findings of, of, of the annexation report. So the first annexation tonight is, was initiated by Mr. Nelson. It's a 1.11 acre property just north of the high school, and you can find a little map of the property in the ordinance. It's in Exhibit A, and it's also in the staff report as well, so you can see the adjacent zoning in the area. And Mr. Nelson initiated this request because he wanted to connect to City Sewer, and so in order to connect to City Sewer in Crestwell, you have to be annexed into city limits. And so among other things, I made the findings that this is a good candidate for annexation, and I would recommend approval of, of the ordinance to annex this property. Any questions?
Counselors? Counselor Dukes?
Now, is that on the north side or the south side of the Ikerbacher?
South side.
Okay, so it's kind of the east side of the high school?
It's directly north, yeah, yeah, northeast, yes, slightly.
Okay, all right.
Counselors, anyone else? I got one. I know we're on the moratorium, and we only have so many sewer hookups. If we annex this property in, would it assume one of those hookups?
Once it connects to sewer, yes, or would it assume?
Awesome. Counselors, anybody else? All right, nobody else got any comments? We're going to hold a one-minute public hearing, so if anybody would like to speak to this, to us, to anyone else in the crowd, go ahead and do that. If you would, just stand up and come to the podium, and we'll give you a couple minutes and say your piece. Public meeting starts, the public hearing starts now.
You need to bring your music. You know, right?
Farm art upstairs, just staring faces to faces.
Now you hear that, you're not just lying down.
Everybody here. 15 seconds, she's going to blow. Counselors, any comments or questions before we ask for a motion? All right, I'm entertaining a motion. Counselor Stewart?
I move that the city council adopt ordinance number 572, an ordinance approving the annexation of certain territory known as tax lots 2600, assessors map 19-03-10-00 to the city of Crestwell and zoning it low-density residential.
Do I have a second? Counselor Morris seconds it. Any other further questions or comments before we go?
So the, the title will need to be read and?
Twice.
Twice.
Okay. Can you please reread the title one more time?
You want me to read the whole motion or just the title?
Just the title of the ordinance twice.
Ordinance 572, annexation of tax lot 2600. Ordinance 572, annexation of tax lot 2600.
Okay. Sufficient enough for our second reading?
Should the city report?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 572, an ordinance approving the annexation of certain territory at assessors map 19-03-10-00, tax lots 2600 to the city of Crestwell and zoning it low-density residential. Now a second?
Please.
Ordinance 572, an ordinance approving the annexation of certain territory at assessors map 19-03-10-00, tax lots 2600 to the city of Crestwell and zoning it low-density residential.
Okay. That is sufficient for a second reading. We have all discussed and commented. All those in favor of annexing the property, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Curtis, your backup.
Good evening, council again.
Nice to see you.
So the second annexation is brought forward by Dwayne and Terry Goodell. They have two lots, two tax lots, I mean, that are 0.52 acres, also near the school district, right off of Fifth and Ann Morse. And they are interested in developing the property, and they came forward to, to my desk because they thought the annexing into a city limits would be a better long-term plan than staying with the county zoning. And so went through the annexation review criteria. There are adjacent city limits via Fifth Street. There's some urban services in, in the vicinity. They're within 300 feet of a sewer line, which is kind of an important technical amount. But I, in, in the findings, you can find that I also recommended approval of this annexation.
All right. Let me tell, we'll have another one-minute public hearing. If anybody would like to speak, please do so. Start that.
Hey there. I am not in opposition or for it.
Can you please give us your name again?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm Scott Lemmons.
I have a long record for everybody else.
Yeah, I get it. I'm Scott Lemmons. I just, I always am a bit concerned when I hear people are being annexed to develop a property while not hearing if they're including affordable housing, how many units might be on this property, et cetera. So just something we ought to consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jeff Cox. I live on the other end of Morse Street, on Sixth and Morse. My concern with them annexing into the city, we're in the county on that end of the street, and we do not wish to be annexed in at this time right now. We're, are concerned that if they annex that property in, are we going to be forced to be annexed in on that end of the street? And if, if not, we'd like to, a lot of the neighbors like to have that in writing if we could. I don't know if that's possible, but.
We can't really answer questions, but we can get back to you.
Hi, Dennis Aiken. I actually live directly next to the lot in question. I have no objections with them developing their property. I have the same concerns that Jeff has. I'm in the county and like to stay that way, and so that was going to be mine. I'd like to, if possible, see it in writing that we're not going to be pushed into the county, or into the city.
Can you guys, can we get your information so we can send an email or have a conversation before you leave?
Sure.
I'll get your questions answered. I think you're going to be safe, but I want to make sure you hear something from the city.
Matthew Covington. I also live directly behind that property, and the road right there, that is the only access I have to my property, so I'm concerned that I will be shut out and not have any access to my property. That's my main concern. Again, whatever they want to do with their property, that's fine. I just would like to be able to, be, get, able to get in and out of my own property. That is my main concern. And along with Jeff and Dennis, I'm county as well. I'd, I'd love to stay that way, so.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jared Olson. I'm actually, they're, the Goodells are my in-laws. He brought up a good question. People should know it's going to be built there. The plan, if everything goes well, you know how that goes, is to have driveways off Morse, not Cherry Lane, and we're hoping to put duplexes in there, some multifamily dwelling houses. I know that, at least I've been told, they're needed here, so that is the plan right now. So we don't know sizes or anything yet, because we don't even have, you know, plot plans and all that stuff yet, so, but that is the plan, just so everyone knows.
Thank you for stepping up and letting everybody know. Appreciate that. Anyone else before I drop the hammer? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Should I read it twice before I look for a motion? Would you please read it twice for us?
We need a motion though first, right?
That's what it says. Should I go ahead and read it twice?
No, I think it's just read twice, and then you guys follow.
Okay. Ordinance 573, an ordinance approving the annexation of certain territory at assessors map 19-03-14-22, tax lots 7300 and 7400 to the city of Crestwell and zoning it low-density residential. Ordinance 573, an ordinance approving the annexation of certain territory at assessors map 19-03-14-22, tax lots 7300 and 7400 to the city of Crestwell and zoning it low-density residential.
All right, so do I have entertaining a motion? Counselor Morris?
I move that the city council adopt ordinance number 573, an ordinance approving the annexation of certain territory known as tax lots 7300 and 7400, assessors map 19-03-14-22, to the city of Crestwell and zoning it low-density residential.
All right, so do I have entertaining a motion? Counselor Morris?
I move that the city council adopt ordinance number 573, an ordinance approving the annexation of certain territory known as tax lots 7300 and 7400, assessors map 19-03-14-22, to the city of Crestwell and zoning it low-density residential.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Counselor Duke seconds it. All right, all is in favor? Please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Move on to C, which brings up Mr. Piper.
Thank you, Mayor Smith, city counselors. The item we have before you is a resolution adopted a supplemental budget. Previously, we had interim city manager who brought quarterly budgets, budget amendments to the council. I think it's a good practice. This is the first quarter that we've been able to analyze our expenses, look at circumstance and see how they changed. The first circumstance that came to mind was the RARE program not, no longer being available through the University of Oregon. The council had adopted a budget hoping to use this as an opportunity to have an economic development person on staff, and a wonderful benefit was that the university would pick up part of that expense. Unfortunately, that, that program was, was ceased this, this year, and we looked at some other funds that may be available, that is, manager Bartarell and myself looked at funds that might be, be available, that being the rain appropriations. We could actually, the city could use those funds to hire an internal planner to do the same function. And to give a little background, there was the planning technician or planning specialist, as it were, that brought on our current planner. Our previous city planner then left us to go to work for the state, and this position was no longer part of the budget going forward. Since then, we've budgeted appropriations for, for things like rain and economic analysis, operating analysis through ElCog, using external parties. The other budget amendment is a piece of playground equipment that was, that was budgeted prior fiscal year, and that wasn't able to be purchased in time for the fiscal year end, and so we're just asking the council to adopt this supplemental budget to bring that back in. And lastly, there is a budget appropriation, a transfer out of Culture and Rec, Recreation Department, to move a staff member to the water plant to start training our next water tran, plant, treatment, water, treatment plant operator. Excuse me, that's my fault. Are there any questions from the council?
Counselor, prepare.
So I got one about, so we're going to transfer one of our current maintenance one operators to there? Do we plan on bringing another maintenance one in to fill that void or not?
I don't have, have any, anybody else budgeted come in. I think that we have staff already budgeted to help with the public works function, and I believe that's big enough.
Counselors? Counselor?
I appreciate that, that, what you're doing with the, the RARE program being defunded, but I'm curious how you got to the determination that we needed another full-time planning tech? We're, we're a town of 6,000 people, 2,000 households. That seems, I mean, you know better than I do, you're in the office every day, so that's what I'm asking.
So the, the determination was made from the amount of applications that we do get, the amount of time that Curtis is now spending throughout the day, trying to split his time between what we call more of short-term planning or tactic planning. Those are the applications, those are the questions, those are looking through code, things like that. And then we're also looking at the list of things that need to be done. A lot of our plans and a lot of our planning documents are out of date. The parts open space plan, our strategic plan, any real type of economic analysis plan, we need to go through our development code, all of our ordinances to bring, to bring those up to date. So the, the logic is to have this planning technician that will do the frontline and assist with some of the things taking place. Also, this person becomes more grant writing for us, pursuing different grants as, as well, to better leverage Curtis' time or the, the current planner's time to take on long-range planning. That's, that's desperately needed.
Counselor?
We, we have already determined that we don't even qualify for a lot of grants because of our median income, right? So, I mean, is there still a lot of grants we can apply for outside of the ones that we don't qualify for?
Sure, for, for playgrounds, there's land, water conservation grants, there's also recreation grants, where we just applied for a grant for a facade program. So, so there's, there's a number of grants that, that we can pursue that aren't economic-based or, or income-based. We really have not realized our potential with either recreation or parts and recreation-type grants, grants for also trail expansion as well. So I, in, in just my short time here, I, I see the need for somebody to do the nuts Because one of the things, and I don't know how long this has been going on, but one of the things that we have not been addressing really well is our long-range planning and getting out ahead of things. It played out for you with Second Street. You know, the downtown plan needs to be updated. So it's definitely warranted and I think this person will, we will make sure they work 40 hours a week and hard and laborous.
So my last question, then, is this to be a permanent position going forward or is this a temporary position until things get caught up?
This will be a permanent position.
Counselors, any other questions? Counselor Stevens?
Yeah, just a quick question. So will the, can we look forward to the playground equipment being purchased for 2026?
Yes, it'll be purchased.
And installed?
Yes. I wonder if Cliff says yes, it'll be installed.
All right, great. That was my question, so thanks. Okay. You feel good, Jim? Everybody done? Asking questions?
We can.
All right. We'll have another one-minute public hearing for all y'all to come up and ask you questions or at least let me and I ask questions, but please keep your mind.
Public hearing begins. We don't need to read the title twice on adoption. Close of public hearing. Jim spoke to two separate, kind of on me.
Sorry, do you have any more questions?
No, I think we're good. I just, you kind of brought up the number two on there, so I want to make everybody understand that we're gonna vote on your first one, which was the adoption of the resolution and then we will, the resolution for the wastewater one moving up to two separate. So I want to make sure we're voting on the first one, would be page 86. So I'm entertaining a motion for the resolution 2025, or 20. Counselor Kramer.
All right. I move to, I move that the City Council approve resolution 2025-20, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year '25, '25-'26, making appropriations to requirements changes for specific funds.
Thank you, sir. I'm looking for a second. Counselor Kent seconds the motion. All is in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Now we're move on to the number two that Jim discussed. Is there any questions for Jim on the wastewater one moving up and training with our wastewater operations manager? All right, Jim, thank you. Okay. We don't need a public hearing on this one, so I'm entertaining a motion. Counselor Kent?
I move that the City Council approve resolution 2025-21, a resolution amending resolution 2025-17, adopting the pay scales for fiscal year '25 to '26 for the City of Crestwell.
Thank you, sir. I have a second. Counselor Castillo seconds the motion. All is in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. All right, we got it up there. Motion passes unanimously. Excellent. So that will get those two. Upcoming events, I'd just like to remind everybody, please look at the city calendar for upcoming events, Parks and Tree, Public Safety, Public Works, Admin and Finance, any meetings are on there, you guys are all welcome to come and attend, so please do so, please volunteer. We're getting towards the end of the year, it's almost Christmas. I know, I just remember everybody, I'm sorry. But we're getting there to the point where we're gonna, could need more volunteers on different committees, so if you feel inclined to kind of hang out an hour or two, couple times a month-ish, please do. So with that, we'll adjourn.